I have thoughts, um, of the P G R M A and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I do not think any members of the public for public forum. So we will go on to minutes of the, you know, the forward twenty twenty five meetings.
Move to approve is written.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes two zeros. Next on to finance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So before you, you have AP warrant number eighty six in the sum of two hundred fifty eight thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars and fifty six cents. This includes the jail assessment for September in the sum of two hundred one thousand, seven hundred thirty six dollars and fifty eight cents. Uh, monthly payment to Sweetzer for our behavioral health liaison and the final, uh, I'm sorry, the initial down payment for the recycling garage, uh, doorwork.
There's a number of, uh, line entries for broadband. What, what are those? Particularly, um. Do, it's, looks like you, it's goes through the Amazon Capital Services, but there's like.
I can answer that. Those are purchases made through the. The, uh, coastal Maine Regional Broadband. Grant that we have from the state. So the state provided us funding to, um, provide digital equity. Initiatives to partners in the communities and we represent both Lincoln and Sagataw County. Our focus is primarily getting nonprofits, municipal governments and those types of organizations. The tools that they need to be able to connect to their citizens or their clients digitally or to provide them training. So a lot of these purchases were meeting owls, laptop computers, uh. Things that allow municipal governments to connect and be available virtually. And we, we receive the money from the state. We've got that into a reserve account and we then use those funds to purchase, make purchases. Agencies. So a lot of these are wrap up purchases for those agencies.
We wouldn't see these every, um, meeting, whatever it's.
No, our, our term, our grant term ends at the end of this year. So we're. Doing the final run of distributions to different agencies. So this represents. Probably about eight or 10 different organizations that had purchases have been made for.
Yeah, I noticed there were a variety of different amounts, so.
Yeah, for example, the town of Newcastle was looking for a, a. Television that they could have in their meeting space that they could connect a, a laptop to. So when they have meetings, they can. Display different documents on the, the TV screen. Um. The Wisconsin Rec Center got a meeting. Space television so that they can also do something similar with remote meetings. Um, we've provided things to libraries to. A lot of different communities and this has been a three-year process. So. Year over year, we get funding and then we use those funds to, to, um, distribute different resources to folks.
And this isn't a reimbursement grant. So they, they forward the funding in advance with these purchases. So that doesn't impact our cash flow.
Not.
Correct, right, correct. It's big for.
Move, move to approve AP warrant eighty six, two hundred fifty eight thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars and fifty six cents.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on motion, all favor.
Aye.
Aye, this two nothing, it passes. Next one.
Okay, AP warrant number eighty seven in the sum of four hundred thirty eight thousand, five hundred sixty five dollars and seventy nine cents. This includes our monthly transfer tax to the state from our Department of Deeds, our monthly payment for October to main state retirement. This one is higher than our typical amount because we had three payrolls in the month of October. Our monthly CMP bill and our monthly rate express bill, which is our fuel for, uh, countywide.
I have no question.
Move to approve AP warrant eighty seven and the amount of four hundred thirty eight thousand, five hundred sixty five dollars and seventy nine cents.
I will second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes two zero.
Okay, AP warrant number eighty nine in the sum of nine hundred nine thousand, five hundred forty nine dollars and sixty eight cents. This includes our final bond payment.
I have my whistle. I have a whistle I was gonna blow. It's the last bond play.
Can we burn the mortgage paper?
As I say, do we have ceremonial? We set off some alarms out when we were at that time. Well, I'm glad you forgot the whistle. That would probably would have been right.
Yes, very annoying.
But, uh, you know, a celebration, you know, bell or something, ding ding, you know, we would go, um.
There you go.
So how long was that bond? How long? Is it a ten-year bond?
No, it was longer than that. I.
Initially it was twenty five years and then it was refunded in fourteen for ten more years.
Nice.
Um, also included in here is our, uh, was our October, uh, bond, uh, October monthly assessment to the jail. Uh, order of bailing wire for the recycling center, uh, sheriff's laptops. And, uh, radio communication for the, um, EMA command vehicle radios.
That's not the, the quote that isn't the fact that, is it? Eleven thousand, that's separate, okay.
I'll move to approve AP warrant eighty nine in the amount of nine hundred nine thousand, five hundred forty nine dollars and sixty eight cents.
I will second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor?
Aye.
It passes two zero.
Payroll warrant number, uh, twenty three in the sum of two hundred fifty six thousand, five hundred one dollars and forty eight cents. Uh. Nothing to really point out here. We again have been over in our overtime line for. Uh, the last few months, but again, that's compensated for our, uh, being under budget on our regular wages and the FICA.
We have a motion for this one.
Move to approve payroll warrant twenty, twenty twenty five dash twenty three in the amount of two hundred fifty six thousand, five hundred one dollars and forty eight cents.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes two zero.
Um, each year we tend to enter into a contract with Dead River for, uh, diesel fuel for the recycling center. We have a tank on site. And, uh. By entering in a contract with them, it allows us to set a fixed price for budgetary purposes and gets us a lower rate than what we would pay at the pump. Um, I'd like permission to enter into a contract with Dead River for three dollars, uh, three point two zero one six per gallon for thirteen thousand gallons. Uh, total cost of the program will be forty one thousand, six hundred twenty dollars and eighty cents. Uh, the contract is to start from the day I sign this to, um, October first of next year. I will tell you the last, uh, diesel fill-up was Veterans Day and we paid three twenty two oh eight.
And this was for three twenty oh six or three twenty one oh six?
Three twenty. Three twenty one. Three two oh one six.
So how big is the tank on site then?
Uh, two hundred fifty gallons.
Okay, so they must have to.
They get a weekly delivery.
And do we track, um, when it gets pumped from that tank to the vehicles at all?
Uh, every, every time they fuel up, they have a, they have a daily.
Okay, so we know what vehicles are being fueled and how much.
They have a daily check, checklist that they've do for each vehicle they drive.
I'll move to approve the recycling diesel fuel contract renewal.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor?
Aye.
I, that says two zero.
I updated some of the questions.
Give me those, son.
Yeah, let's, it don't seem carried if you have. You fill in that number there, right?
Yeah, before you guys didn't change it, I just.
I get it. That's the thing with using the form, right? Oh, maybe did I substitute them?
What about me? I was named in the.
Now what changes do we have on this document?
Okay, so since the last time we talked budget, um. I have revised a few things. We got a change in our retiree health program going from a group companion plan. Down to a Medicare Advantage plan. What that means for us is a pretty significant savings from. Um. Uh, about seven hundred dollars in the retiree a month to four hundred and seventy two dollars a month. Saving the retirees thirty dollars a month and, um, just over thirty thousand for the county. Uh, we made some updates to employment status changes that have happened since our last meeting. I've also gone through and made the changes requested by. I've also gone through and made the changes requested by the Budget Advisory Committee. And, um, entered the changes for the health insurance. We put in an estimated eight percent and it came in at seven point seven. Oh, I've also added in, excuse me, I've also added in the, um, estimated budget for the planning revenue that we didn't have before. Bringing it down to, um, an increase of three point four two.
Did the risk pool numbers get here yet or is it? And I know they're waiting on some things, I think, that. Well, I have some follow-up questions, I think, from the DA. Officers is that, um, did I see that? Further, we have, um, a budget, a line item that may affect the budget.
On the agenda? So, since our last meeting, the DA has done. Interviews for the paralegal position and has made a selection. So there would be a staff change there.
But that still leaves one opening.
We have interviews scheduled tomorrow for the victim witness advocate position. And the paralegal billing. Is a promotion from a current employee who is in a legal secretary position. So that would then leave the legal secretary position vacant right now.
And how does that affect the budget going forward? Is filling that vacancy for the legal assistant, right?
Legal secretary.
Legal se- um, secretary.
So our budget has five full-time positions. And there's currently three full-time employees. One has moved from legal secretary to paralegal. So it still leaves the VWA and the legal secretary position vacant. I would imagine after interviews this week, we'll have a recommendation for the VWA position. And during the conversation with the DA during the interview process for the paralegal. She's indicated she'd like permission to fill the legal secretary position. And, uh.
Do you know how, uh, this staff level compares to other counties, um, within the region or district?
I know that staffing has increased across the region over the last, say, ten years. Several years back, we had four full-time employees. We've, in the last five years, increased the VWA level from one full-time to two full-time. I don't know if that's adequate for, for caseload. I don't know if the caseload has changed. I don't have that kind of data to. Justify the positions. I just am given the information that is coming from the DA.
So I thought I heard the district attorney say that we're like lowest paid staff members. Did you have a chance to look at?
I.
The comparison?
That was a request that she collect the data. I was not involved in that. I have not received it. I don't have any indication that that is accurate. Um, I don't have any proof against it either, so.
Right.
Uh, if you'd like me to reach out to the counties myself, I can do that for you.
Well, maybe reach out to the DA first to see if she found out the data that we were looking for. If she can't produce it.
I'll see her tomorrow, so I'll.
Yeah.
I can ask her that.
Follow up, that would.
If she hasn't, do you want me to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
My, my impression is that we're right on, we're competitive. You know, but if we're not, I guess we should know about it, but.
I know that we've been very aggressive with salaries over the last five years. We've been trying to keep up with pace. Covid really. Put a demand on our pay scale and we responded year over year on that.
Very aggressively year over year.
Yeah. I'd be surprised if we're far off.
And of course, the benefits are probably similar from county to county or, you know.
They vary, uh, we're.
We're probably.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes you have a better health plan. Or a lower cost, or you'll have more, more paid time off or less paid time off. It's, I mean, it's. You can get into the nitty-gritty of it, but what really people tend to pay attention to is what the pay rate is.
Yeah. And one follow-up question I had as I looked at, oh, um, for. Nonprofit requests or requests outside of the county's government, do we have a policy of? How we evaluate those or what we fund or is it just ad hoc? And if, and organization request funds, we consider whatever and whether or not they're funded.
So we don't have a written policy about that. It's been sporadic over the years that I've been here. Uh, some years we'll get several requests from different agencies, some we get none. Uh, the traditional ones are the Historical Society, Soil and Water and Extension, which we. Regularly fund those. I know that municipalities have, some of them have written policies on how they'll accept and. Receive or consider requests, but we don't have anything like that. Um, it's traditionally been presented to the commissioners. If there's no objection at that round, we put it into the budget. We let the budget committee weigh in on that and then the commissioners make a final decision on whether or not they want to fund it. And sometimes the budget committee has made a recommendation to provide funding and the commissioners have removed it. There's others, the, there's other things that are going into that evaluation based on the entire county budget.
But no criteria that the commissioner has used on a regular basis, other than just the normal. Well, their thoughts on funding those organizations.
I think that the overriding. Uh, lens that they're use, they have used in the past is how does this impact the county tax? And how does it provide a service to the county citizens? If you're looking at the county as a whole, there's about thirty-five thousand people. Does this request serve them equitably? Is it a service that the county as, as a whole is supporting? Um, sometimes one of the things that is considered is how are municipalities and individual districts responding to requests that are similar? And sometimes that will make a decision for an individual commissioner.
So included in this budget is what the Budget Advisory Committee had asked for.
Any questions?
Under communications and the personnel, did we, what did we come, what does this reflect in terms of the supervisor positions?
That reflects one supervisor at the request of the Budget Advisory Committee.
Okay, and then within capital or the. Communications, radio upgrades included in this?
Yes.
Capital, both of them?
Capital, yep, both radio and the EOP. That was discussed under the, um, under EMA. Along with, uh, we have been able to identify some grant funding that will help support it. I haven't been able to identify the entire project yet, but we're still working on it.
Actually, I do have another one if I may, is the, uh. We've heard from the DA, um, based on the advisory, um, committees recommendations. Have we heard from other departments? If they're fine with whatever, any adjustments that were, um, made for any.
No.
You know, feedback at all.
No, I, we've had an, an opportunity to let each department know what was, what came out of the. Or the Budget Advisory Committee. And I don't think that any of the departments that were asking for really large increases were surprised by the conversation.
And no strong response, one way or the other, could not, or don't cut whatever. Or we really need those funds. No, you didn't hear anything like that.
Yep.
Great.
Do we have any notes from Bill?
No, I, I've talked to Bill yesterday in fact, and, um, his concern was where we're at with the. Uh, two bridges agreement with Knox County. He didn't have any budget conversations that he asked.
So I don't think we can really take a, or should take a vote without him here. Did he give any? Uh, feedback? I know he couldn't be here today, um, of whether or not he wanted to actually be here for a vote. And on the budget itself or?
No, no, he saw the agenda though.
He saw that, yeah, yeah.
And we have to have it done by the second meeting of December. We need to know this number before then.
It, the budget needs to be set before the end of the current fiscal year, otherwise. Our next fiscal year has to be capped at, I believe it's eighty percent for us.
So.
We've historically done it before the end of the year.
But if we wait till the next meeting and Bill's here, that's not a big impediment, um, that may give us time for the risk pool numbers.
I hope that we get risk pools soon.
Fingers crossed.
I know that they're struggling to get data out of some counties, um. It's frustrating because we all have time crunches and ours was turned in on time, so.
My preference is to have Bill here so that we include him in the discussion and be fine with that.
Yep, move to table final vote until December second.
Are you okay if I discover more tweaks before now and then to continue to massage things or do you want me to leave it alone?
Tweak away.
If, if.
I have a fear that it would tear you apart if you weren't allowed.
You know me.
If it makes it. So please do.
All right, I like it.
So that was a motion to table?
Did you second?
Second, and any further discussion? No, um, discussion, all favor, just table it till.
Aye.
Me, I two, nothing, that. You're welcome. Before we go on, I see that we do have a member of the public, uh, here. Ma'am, do you, were you here to just observe or did you have a comment?
Well, thank you very much. I, um, I've commented before. I'm just, um. Gathering information for myself. I found it really informative to be present, um. And I've had my, uh, own personal experience, um, with the DA. And so listening to these, um, discussions has just been really valuable to understand. How it all functions and perceivably how it doesn't and how the budgetary committee can't possibly fix that. So, um, I don't have anything to add to this moment other than it's my interest in being present. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, the sheriff has given us, uh, the jail count information. But the other items on there, Carrie, you.
I'm prepared to present. So the sheriff and chief deputy are at the range today, so they were unable to attend the meeting and asked for me to. Present on their behalf. So the jail count is pretty straightforward. The total count today is. One fifty-six. I know that there's been a lot of, um, attention being paid to our inmate count and. The originating facility because we're in transition right now, moving from some borders to a, a different contract. Um, I expect to see that change quite a bit in December. There's.
We're down.
Lateral. So the Waldo County contract with Two Bridges expires at the end of December. And the Knox County agreement is in its final stages of approval. So we'll be seeing an increase in Knox County staff quite, or excuse me, inmates quite a bit. And Waldo County will go down to nothing. Um, I know that there's also been some. There's been fewer folks coming from ICE. There's been some struggles with getting the information that was needed to be able to admit. Folks into the jails so that that counts lower than it has been historically.
Are you aware of anybody who are turned away because of not having the credential they need to? Um, house them at the Two Bridges, um, from the federal?
I know that there's, there's information that needs to be provided to Two Bridges for them to evaluate whether or not they're. Able to house that particular person if they have the, the right, um. Environment for that person and without that information, Two Bridges is not able to make the evaluation and then proceed. So that it stalls the process right there.
But they're, they don't have any data of how often they turn.
I'm not aware of it.
And it does seem that overall it's lighter, but we've been in like one-seventy-ish or so, haven't we, for the last few meetings?
We have been, yes.
So being down to one-nineteen seems. Definitely, um.
One, one fifty-six.
One fifty, sorry, yeah, one fifty-six. So, uh, still twenty or so, yep.
Yeah. I see that the Lincoln and Saginaw County numbers are starting to ease a little bit also. At one point, they were. They were a little bit higher than where they are today.
And do you know if that's, um, by getting the pre-trial people through the system or just no?
I have no idea. I won't even pretend to make something up with that. I have no idea. Um, so the first item, um, after the jail count is a. Termination of an employee that happened quite a while ago. So we had an employee, name was Julie Grollo. She was with us for a long time, serving in court security. She also did animal control for quite a while. She moved out of state and then returned back and we rehired her. And, um, there's been some, some technicalities that prevent her from working anymore. So she hasn't worked for us since November of twenty-twenty-three. And we were doing a review of employee files just to make sure that we had everything accurate. And that's when it was discovered that we still had her as an active employee and the termination was never presented to the commissioners. So this isn't anything that was. Uh, any kind of discipline or anything like that. Julie was a great employee for us and it's just.
Just cleaning up.
Yeah, we're just cleaning up the, the records. But I need your permission to make that effective.
I'll move to finalize employee termination of Julie Grollo.
I second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passes two, zero.
The next item is a purchase authorization for coastal car wash. We purchased twenty-seven car wash passes. That allow us to take our cruisers and all of our sheriff's vehicles during the winter months. To, there's two locations, one's in Dammer Skoda, one's in Booth Bay. Um, the total cost is four thousand fifty dollars. What this helps us to control is, uh, the cruisers are getting cleaned and maintained regularly. And we're not having our employees in a frozen wash bay in the sheriff's building. So, um, it's a worker's comp issue for me because I don't have employees. Working with a water hose in freezing conditions and then having. A slip opportunity or, or an injury.
So they go through the automatic.
They go through the. And we only do this in the winter months. In the summer months, it's not a, a slip issue, so they use the wash bay in the summer months.
Does coastal car wash give a deal for the volume? Is that, uh?
So, um, this is. For twenty-seven fleet vehicles, we have twenty-four seven access. We can use both of the facilities. And as part of the cost of this, they're also including three decal removals. During that same time period. So if we have a vehicle that we're trading out and we need all the decals taken off, it's, uh. Takes quite a while to get all those decals off and they're including that in the price.
I'll move to approve the purchase authorization to coastal car wash, four thousand fifty dollars.
I second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes two, zero.
Thank you. The next item is called tip four-one-one. This is a subscription that we have annually. It's a service that allows people to call in and give tips to law enforcement in an anonymous. Um, banner. So, um, we have a phone number people can call in. They don't have to give their personal information. And it gets scrambled through a data system. data system so that when we receive that actual tip, we can't trace it back to the original caller. Uh, it's beneficial to us because some people don't want to give their phone number. They don't want to be traced. They just want to provide information to law enforcement and this service provides that opportunity for them. The total annual cost is three thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. This is a longstanding contract that we've had with them.
So it's really confidential, not just to people on the scene or wherever, it's confidential to law enforcement.
It is.
Interesting, okay. What have you doing, so?
Move to approve purchase authorization to tip four-one-one for three thousand eight hundred eighty dollars.
I second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So the first thing that I have is I'm happy to report that both of our applicants that you had approved to offer conditional approval for passed their background checks. Yay. We have set a start date for them and so today I'm looking for a formal authorization to hire both Abby Planeta and Nicholas Mercer as full-time communications dispatchers.
Effective?
Effective. Their first day will be December first.
No skeletons in the closet ever done.
What towns do they come from?
One of them comes from Nobo Borough and the other one from Friendship or Cushion, Cushion, I believe it is Cushion. One has been a paramedic, was a longtime paramedic and with a COVID casualty and got done doing that, um, and has been doing some other things with grant funding and still having um, her fingers in helping in emergency services in an, in a form with grants and so forth. And the other one has always had a desire to be in public safety and lives in Nobo Borough and is currently working at a local grocery store as a meat cutter and was waiting for this opportunity to open up.
Great. I'll move to approve the hiring of Abby Planeta and Nicholas Mercer.
I will second that motion. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes two.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item is we have our C M, our radio maintenance folks. They come out yearly and they do a, a preventative maintenance on all of our equipment. During their preventative maintenance, this is part of their contract that we have with them. They discovered that two of our antennas on towers, one in Nobo Borough and one in Booth Bay are in need of repair. So this is a request to purchase those antennas and have them installed. It includes climbers, um, for them to be able to get up there and install it and the amount is twelve thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and eighteen cents.
It's equipment and installation.
Yep.
For both sites.
And this is bound as part of the annual program of reviewing.
Correct. And that's why, that's why we do that. In previous years, prior to having this contract for them to come out and do this preventative maintenance on all of our equipment, we waited until something broke and then they came out and usually it would be in the midst of a storm and then we were trying to coordinate. And during storm weather, they can't climb the towers. So then we would like try and find a way to hobble through until we could get it taken care of. So this is greatly appreciated that they do this, that we have this implemented so we can identify the problems before they become broken completely.
Do they send a drone up to do an inspection on these or something like that or do they climb it?
During their preventative maintenance, to be quite honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure if they do a drone or climb. I believe, I don't believe that they climb, but they can take all kinds of readings and test things as to, they stand on different sides of the tower and they do all kinds of like clicking and taking readings. And if they're not getting the readings back from the antenna that they need to, then they know that the antenna is faulty.
Do you know the expected life of the new ones?
On our last, um, time that we did radio equipment, I believe that in our capital budget, we budgeted for them to be replaced under ten year. So I think that it was more like a twelve to fifteen was the life expectancy. And I, I believe that that was when we were starting to build so that we would have a capital reserve for when these types of things came about.
Would this come out of the reserve or, I mean?
This, actually I have this in my budget.
You have it in your budget, okay. So you plan so much every year for replacements or whatever, okay.
Eventually it all fails.
Yes, yeah.
We just don't know which, which is gonna fail which year.
Or what's gonna fall, falter first, yeah. Uh, but they do have to climb to actually install the antenna.
Yes, yes, and that's in here.
Okay, yeah, I saw that.
Yes.
The nice part about our, our C M providing this service is they now have on-staff climbers. So they're not relying on a third-party vendor to be able to schedule those repairs. They can schedule it themselves and their staff does the climbing.
And this will happen soon if we approve it, that they can get rid of it.
Yes, weather permitting and getting the parts, they will get it done as soon as they can and obviously the sooner before we get into those terrible winter months.
I'll move to approve the purchase authorization to R C M Tower for the antenna replacements, twelve thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and eighteen cents.
I will second that as well. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
While you're signing, I'll give you sign up.
If there can zoom in.
Yeah, I see that, that's your answer here.
Those are the, she might talk us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So we're on to Emily. She was here first and you're almost.
Like.
Here for two items. Um, the first is we have an existing contract with the state's housing opportunities program. It's called a service provider grant and that is the sewer and water feasibility study that we're working on. Um, they have pitched amending that service provider contract to utilize our staff to help assist the state with implementation of L D one-one-eight-four. And that bill essentially establishes a program at the state level for tracking building permits so they can see how many housing units are being built annually. Um, and so our role for an additional eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars is to assist our municipalities in Lincoln County with that tracking process. Um, right now it's only required for municipalities with four thousand or more residents. So that would only be Waldeboro in Lincoln County. However, they want to start the discussions with municipalities that have less than four thousand residents to try and get them, um, into a system that can be sent up to the state. Um, most of our municipalities may have an Excel sheet. It might be just still paper and filing cabinets. Um, so our role is really just education and outreach for this additional eighty-six hundred, um, dollars.
So did, if I heard you right, the state passed a law that causes us to spend money. Uh, it's not funded.
Like, is. They're giving us money to help.
Giving us.
Yes, to help implement this.
Alright, and, and the original contract is with the state?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and they're asking for the amendment?
Yes.
So that.
So they.
They would provide the extra service.
Yes, for, with additional money towards our contract.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's a little bit different than what I thought. So, very funny.
Adding money to the account.
Hey, let's go for it. Yeah, that's great. Of. Any questions?
Nope.
No.
So you'll need a motion to enter the contract amendment. I'll move to approve contract amendment for the Housing Opportunity Program Service Provider Grant.
I second that. Any further discussion?
Can I have your permission to sign on your behalf also?
Pardon my motion.
Thank you.
And pardon my second, and, and pardon the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All the, I, it passes two zero.
She's got it all ready for me.
Yeah. Now that's good for.
It's efficient, so let me tell you.
If she wasn't planning like that, that maybe would be so good.
But I'm in the department I'm in.
Do you have a sense of how, uh, the study is going for the water sewer?
We're kicking off. So we signed the contract documents with Fussin O'Neil. Um, and now we're working with the sewer districts and municipalities to schedule a kickoff meeting, uh, which will happen hopefully before Thanksgiving. And then, um, Fussin O'Neil will hit the ground running with all of their in-house work that they need to do. So it's going, it's progressing along the timeline that we had, uh, pitched to the state. So I think they're, they're happy with it.
And do you expect a, a report in the spring?
They have, we're anticipating that their work will run through about August of next year where we will have a comprehensive study put together and then they'll start working on a funding strategy to figure out how this can get paid for. Um, and then we will do a pretty big publicity and outreach, uh, likely next September.
On some contract.
Yes, so the second contract that I'm here for is to, um, enter into year two of an agreement with Gabe McPhail who her business is Resilient Communities L three C. We worked with Gabe, um, all of last year as part of our NOAA Regional Coordinator Grant from the state. This is now year two of that program and we'd like to continue to utilize Gabe's services. Um, essentially what she does is, um, she really herds the cats for us in terms of we're working with, uh, two other, no, three other regional planning organizations as part of this program. And she makes sure that all of our ducks are in a row, um, so that it takes the burden off of myself and staff at Lincoln County Planning to get out a newsletter on behalf of the entire southern and mid-coast region of Maine. Um, she puts together a lot of workshops for us. Um, grant opportunity newsletters out to municipalities. So, um, her services have been really incredible for year one and I'd like to renew it for year two. Um, it's, but her time is built into the money that we get from the state. So, um, we're just subcontracting with her as part of that grant program.
And if we didn't have her, we would actually have to have a new staff person, right, to fill in.
I think it would be something that we wouldn't be able to fund with a new staff position. Um, so it would be, the burden would fall on us as staff to try and do that. And then it's what do we let fall off in order to take this on?
And the total amount for this contract is twelve thousand, twelve thousand dollars.
And is that project based or hourly? We have so much time.
It's based, um, she has two, so there's a, her work plan is part of the documents that what I've submitted um, to you. So she's working on, we have a number of tasks that we have to do as part of this grant. But essentially her role is to develop and deliver trainings, adhere learning opportunities, case studies, tools and other resources as well as um, to foster and support collaborative efforts among communities and those communities being, um, essentially Southern Maine, Greater Portland Council Government's territory, mid-coast and Lincoln County. So uh, we cover a significant amount of communities through her work, um, as well as organizing all of us in internally for the RPOs for that twelve thousand dollars. So she has tasked out, um, each RPO is putting in the same amount to cover her time for all of us.
And would you like permission to sign on our behalf?
I have it. I love here. So I don't know if you want me to cross or edit? I can edit this and have you sign it. Okay. Yes, please.
I'll move to authorize the county administrator to sign the subcontract agreement with Gabe McPhail of Resilient Communities L three C.
I second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes two zero.
I'll send this to you this morning.
So it's good to have somebody to hurt the cats if you want.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
So you sort of covered the DA's office on a motion recommendation, but more to discuss with that.
So we had a promotion interview process, the DA, the deputy DA and I interviewed the applicants that were selected from the pool of applications that we received. Uh, we did that on November seventh and we unanimously uh, recommend promoting Brianna Edwards from the DA's office as the legal secretary into the position of paralegal and to make that effective on Monday, November tenth. I contacted Commissioner Blodgett and got a verbal approval to go ahead with that, uh, back on the seventh.
By we, you mean you and the DA? The DA doesn't need. Who, who was we? When you say we?
The DA, the deputy DA and I were the panel that did the interviews. Uh, so essentially the DA made the decision and we agreed with the decision that was made.
How long did it take to fill that position?
The vacancy, it was either the end of July or the beginning of August when our former county employee resigned and, and took a different position in the district. We advertised it internally first. We received some applicants from internal. Interviews were not scheduled and then we had a variety of things happen. One of the applicants withdrew and then later on, that same applicant decided to go back into the pool. On, and when that one applicant withdrew, the DA decided that she wanted to re-advertise so that we could have a larger pool and make it a more inclusive process and she wanted it advertised outside of the county as well. So that went into the newspaper. And we reposted it internally and I think there were eight applications that we received. And it took a few weeks to get that process scheduled. So it's been several months.
And it remained vacant. There was no temporary support.
No, it was vacant. It was vacant and during that time, so th- that employee left. That was the first vacancy. Then, a couple of months later, the assistant district attorney became vacant. So we, we just recently had a new hire at, in the ADA position in the last two weeks, I believe it was.
That's a state position.
Yep. The victim witness advocate resigned in September, I believe was the timing on that one. So we've been down to three full-time staff. One of those full-time county staff has been on medical leave and then has been working remotely as a, a, um, accommodation for the medical procedure.
How, did we have a sense of how long that's going to last?
I, I believe that that employee is going back to onsite work soon.
But, uh, she has been providing some services while dealing with the medical issue.
Yes.
And, and so to back what we talked about earlier, then there's still a physician vacant. It's now the legal secretary that's open and.
So with this promotion.
Right.
The legal secretary moved into the paralegal position. So we now have a legal secretary and that is going to be part of my request is not only to approve the promotion.
Go through the process.
But the DA would like to backfill the
Right.
legal secretary position as well.
Now, there'll, there'll be vacancies back from July until we fill the legal secretary position. Uh, okay.
So then to this is how long is the person being promoted been a legal secretary?
Don't have her date of hire in front of me, but I believe it was this calendar year that she was hired by us. She has experience working as a supervisor in another capacity before she came to us. Um, but she's she's very skilled in what she does. Um, the deputy district attorney has been working with her in the paralegal capacity since the paralegal position has been vacant. Um, so she's being paid to be the legal secretary, but really has assumed a lot more duties since then and she's interested in becoming certified as a. Becoming certified as a paralegal. I believe there's a. An education process that she can take certification classes and she's very interested in doing that.
Did the paralegals have certification, do you mean?
I. I know that she had a bachelor's degree, but I don't believe it was a specific certification to be a paralegal.
I will move to approve the promotion recommendation of Brianna Edwards, the paralegal.
Effective.
November tenth, twenty twenty five.
Very good, November tenth.
I second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
It passes to zero.
Thank you. And the second part of that is the backfilling of the legal secretary position. Are you? Supportive of us moving forward with filling that position?
Yes, you want a motion?
I'll need a motion to.
You'll you'll have to, you're gonna post it internally and externally.
It would need to go to both. We've posted it internally in the past and there it's. It's an entry level position. We've been busy, let me tell you. So. Beck, I think it was last year, we installed new security cameras in the courthouse. We have a new. System where we can manage the cameras. And when that was installed, there were twelve cameras installed. It it took the place of, I think there were maybe eight prior to that. They were old, they were faulty, they were not easy to retrieve information off of. Part of. This process was to upgrade the security of our buildings. It was. Homeland Security Grant Priority to make sure that we had secure facilities during. It was really back when the elections were hotly contested and. And security around elections was happening. So it was a. A priority of FEMA that we look at our buildings. So we prioritize the the. Security cameras in the courthouse. We also beefed them up at the. Planning office. We did some door replacement at the planning office as part of that. We did door access controls at the comm center. And there are still funds left in that bucket of money. And what we have circled back to to try to use up that bucket of money is to look at the dead spots in the courthouse. We started with that. So there's some areas that. You can't quite capture on the twelve cameras that we put in. And what I'm proposing is that we add an additional six security cameras. It'll add on to the system we have already. So it's the camera and the installation. It's not the the. The network piece of it. We already have that in place and it's upgradable. This is the same company that installed the first system. They came out and took a look at. What we have and gave us some recommendations on how we can identify or how we can cover those dead spots. The total amount of the project is thirteen thousand three hundred ten dollars. It's all covered by Homeland Security Funds. We have a deadline on dates on. How long we have to use those funds? So we're still well within those dates and. I'd like to move forward with this project with your permission.
So the, when you say they're not networked, is the network. They get installed and then it goes to the monitoring TV or whatever is that? The system, if you will, or the network?
So the network of the cameras, it's got a recording. Device, it's got a display monitor out in the hallway. That's what the security folks have at the front entrance. And there's, if you ever look at it, it's got squares like the old Hollywood Squares game. But there's.
More square.
There'll be more squares filled in with more cameras. It also has the capability of us accessing it remotely. So we don't have to be standing in front of that monitor. We can access it from a remote computer as well.
So if we had to evacuate the building, but still. Had the cameras running.
We have, we have the ability to do that. And we also have the ability that we can look at the planning cameras. Even though they're down the road, we we have that ability to view them remotely.
And then this is just a plug-in thing. We get the equipment, add the new cameras and we're good.
Add the new cameras, add the new cabling and then plug it into the the central system.
And this covers it all.
This covers it all. It even covers, there's two existing cables. They reused previously existing cables and they're faulty. We've discovered that every time there's a power outage, it makes the cameras go down because they can't carry the load. The way the other new cables carry it. So this covers the cost of replacing those cables as well.
That raises a question. When the power goes out, is there a system that that? Those cameras still work if somebody killed the power?
Generator.
Generator, okay. Question?
None. I'll move to approve the purchase authorization for the courthouse security cameras and installation.
I will second that and. Ask if there's any more discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
To me, hi.
It passes two zero.
There will be another proposal coming after this one is. Moving forward, the I believe the final. Project in this Homeland Security Grant. Fund is the comm center. There's some cameras there that could.
Blind spots.
There's some blind spots, but there's also some upgrades that the existing system could use.
Especially if the the cabling, that sounds interesting is that, I mean, you don't think much of the connections, but they do matter.
Yeah, a bad cable will. Provide a failure point and we have to witness that every time the power goes out. That's one courthouse elevator. This is a fun one. So in a previous meeting, we discussed the. Condition of the courthouse elevator, knowing that it needs a major overhaul. And in the meantime, the door. On the elevator, sometimes it closes and sometimes it reopens and refuses to close. So we have the elevator out of service right now. We can't take the chance of having somebody trapped on the elevator and not. Be able to get the door open. So. The Pine State Elevator came out and took a look at it. They gave us two proposals. Knowing that we have this big project coming down the road. So they, for. About seven thousand dollars, they can order some equipment that. We can't use in the big project. We can't reuse it. They can get it up and running and it would be sometime after Thanksgiving. Or for about twenty thousand dollars, nineteen thousand eight hundred specifically. They can order a new door operator clutch. Door protection device, pickup rolls. And have the permit fee and the state inspector come out and look at the elevator. It's a lengthier lead time on equipment. It's a more expensive process than the quick fix. But it is also providing us with parts that can be used.
That's my question.
Into the next phase of this. So I went upstairs and I had a conversation with the court clerk because. They are most impacted by this. Our our maintenance staff uses the elevator to move. The the cleaning equipment up and down, but the court visitors use that elevator primarily. And I gave the different options, knowing that we have this big project coming and the court clerk was. Extremely gracious. She's terrific to work with. Sarah Murphy is wonderful to have in this building and I'm very grateful for. The teamwork that she always brings to these conversations. What she said to me is you have to do the right thing. Don't do the fast thing, do the right thing. And if we have somebody that is here for court, that needs the elevator, that has a mobility issue, we can provide a Zoom link. That person can appear in court as if they were there as long as we, the county, make space available for that person. To have the Zoom link and I. Said if it comes down to it, that person can sit at my desk if we have no other places. It it's, it makes a difference to be able to do the right project instead of to do the fast project. I also let her know what we're facing down the road. It's looking like April would be the timeframe when we would be. Looking at the big repair. We've already communicated to Pine State that we're interested in moving forward with this project. And we also told them that we're gonna select the. The project that, the repair that would allow us to reuse those parts. So I'd like permission to do the repairs that will get the elevator up and running before the April. Overhaul and that's a total cost of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Sounds like we're almost doing like the. A complete overhaul. I mean, the whole thing is like we should rip it out and start all over, but. You know, there is some infrastructure, I guess, that there that we can save, but.
Right.
You know, it's like. What's gonna happen next week or whatever not, but this will probably help.
This'll get it back open.
And get it back. And and that is a release access to justice to that, you know, but. Sure, we can give accommodations, but is that, you know, fair? A fair system when they're treated different than others, but we are constrained by safety issues and. You know, I I agree that we should go on and do the best. That we can do now and use those parts to make that even a better elevator. Once we finish the next stage of it.
Right, this this repair will get the elevator back up and running before the end of the year.
Is it the upstairs door or the downstairs door that has issues?
I don't ride the elevator, so I don't know.
Well, there's certainly a big sign upstairs that turned around and I said, I thought we fixed that, but we did, yeah.
Not yet, not yet.
That needs to get done.
It's a big dollar amount and a big project, so.
And they're scheduling, so they really need to hear from us as soon as possible so that we can get it done as soon as.
I'll move to approve the purchase authorization to court for the courthouse elevator appears for nineteen thousand eight hundred.
I second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
It passes two zero. All right, now for this next one, who's gonna send all the emails if? You know, it seems like I get those all the time.
From Carol. So Carol is retiring and she has submitted her retirement notice to us. And her last day of work will be January thirtieth of twenty six. She's well ahead of. The process, which I'm very much appreciative of. It'll give us some time to to. Start advertising, backfill the position and also it'll give us time to sit with with Carol. To get that training component that we need to make a seamless transition, so.
How long has she been with us?
She's in her letter, I believe. I don't, it's not in her letter. So it's been, it's been many years. She said that when she interviewed, she was asked what her five-year goals were and she responded that she hoped to retire from Lincoln County. So she's been able to achieve that goal.
Okay, well, at least five.
Yeah, it's it's been more than, much more than five, yeah.
And how has that role? I mean, has that? Position been met for the, you know, as an HR coordinator served its purpose or?
So.
Do you have to look at the position as well as the employee at this point?
I've known that this is coming. Carol was very transparent with us to let us know that she intended on retiring in the coming year. And when she first took this position, it was early on in our process of. Looking at administration and how the county is run. When I started here, we didn't have an HR person. The county administrator had. The responsibility of HR. They had a consultant that they would advise. On family medical leave or union contracts or things of that nature, but it was a very fractured system. And it's been really a priority of mine to to. Bring that into the in-house realm. If if an employee needs to talk to somebody in HR. They don't want to make a phone call to somebody that lives in York County. That's, it doesn't give the feeling of human resources. At that point in time, we struggled with budget and this was really a part-time. Opportunity for us and the way that we got Carol's position to be full-time was we split it with the jail. So there's about ninety employees with Lincoln County and there's. Fifty or sixty at the jail right now and that number's going up. Having a half-time HR person, we struggle. So there are many, many times when Michelle is covering HR duties, I'm covering HR duties when Carol's at the jail. So in this coming budget, I propose that we split the position and make it full-time. For Lincoln County. We don't share that position anymore. And the jail is also in a similar position where they've added that to their budget for a full-time person.
So they look up to do the same.
Yeah, I've been talking with James quite a bit on this so that he he's aware of what our intentions are and. I'm gonna help him through the process of getting somebody on board on his end. By taking paid family leave in-house. By having new rules in place for earned paid leave and a lot of the other things that have come. From the state in the last ten years, this is a full-time role. And do you really want your finance director to be spending time doing HR? That's really not. The priority that you should have there. She's doing a great job, don't get me wrong, but that's really not her responsibility.
I like the fact that. The the focus will be just on the county employees.
Yeah.
And and it's, you don't have to be distracted by another entity or organization and keep things separate.
And keep them straight because their benefits are different than our benefits. So trying to give advice to a county employee on benefits and remembering which. Organization it is that you're talking about that. It's, it it must be challenging. I know I would struggle with it if I was doing that.
Do you anticipate changing the job description at all?
I do, I do. And I've already started looking at that and. I imagine that in the next couple of meetings, you're gonna have a draft to review. So. I'd like permission to accept her retirement notice. Effective January thirtieth, twenty twenty six and proceed with the replacement process as I just outlined it.
I'll move to accept the employee retirement notice of Carol Tebow and authorize the county administrator to. Begin the process of filling that position and the retirement is effective January thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Hi, congratulations, Carol.
Thank you. The next item is an opioid grant request. So to refresh your memory, we had a process back in November of last year. Where we issued a request for proposals to the community. Folks who are associated with nonprofits in the opioid addiction world. Were encouraged to apply on behalf of their organization. We issued. Many grants. It was over two hundred thousand dollars worth of grants that we. We put out into the community. There's a variety of organizations that are are. Have received fund. They already received the funding on it. There are still some dollars available and our priority now is to make sure that we have funding for the behavioral health liaison. With the sheriff's office. It's about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And as I project out the costs over the next twenty. Five years, I think it is that we're going to get settlement payments. Those payments gradually decrease. And at some point, we won't have the full hundred thousand. And I anticipate that cost will go up as well over those same twenty-five years. So issuing another round of grant applications really hasn't been a priority of ours now because we've really identified a use for all future funds. However, there were some funds held back that, in the very first round, that were intended for future applicants that weren't identified. And a proposal came to me that I, I met with the person running it. And I think it's a great proposal and it, it has a niche service that is not served by the previous grants. So this proposal is to, they're requesting twenty thousand dollars for Lincoln County to assist in preparing a property to be a female recovery house. And it's associated with an existing animal kennel, not a shelter, but a kennel. So people bring their dogs and cats to be boarded or to receive grooming. And the person who applied is Sally Albert. She runs a company that provides us with medical services at the jail. So she's Alternative Corrections Healthcare. That is Sally Albert. She also operates a variety of different businesses in addition to that. And she's purchased this property in Edgecombe. And it'll be the first female recovery residence in Lincoln County in Edgecombe. And it'll provide safe, structured housing and peer-led recovery support for women seeking to maintain long-term sobriety and rebuild their lives. Their residents will focus largely on women recently released from incarceration. It addresses a critical gap in recovery housing for women in the region and aims to create a supportive environment that promotes stability, self-sufficiency, and community connection. What this opportunity will bring is not only the recovery piece of this, but it'll, because it's tied to a kennel, there will be an opportunity for workforce training. So that the folks in the recovery house will be able to work at the kennel. They'll be able to earn money. They can earn skills. They'll be employees of the kennel. And also have the onsite recovery counseling and peer support associated with that. We don't have another location in Lincoln County that provides services to females. So this will be that niche that I was referencing earlier. The purchase of the, the real estate, the building, Sally has already done that. She's identified funding for this. She's already closed on the property. And what she is asking the county to consider is to provide funding so that she can purchase furnishing and do some maintenance to the building, essentially painting, fixing some door frames that need to be fixed. Some light carpentry, not anything major in renovation. It's completely up to you whether or not you fund it. But I think that the facility itself is a great addition to the organizations that we've already funded. It's, it really completes that picture.
So I, as you mentioned, thought that we sort of earmarked or thought that this would help support that behavioral health person, the Sheriff's Department. If we do this, does it jeopardize any of that? Or you mentioned funding later down the road. Does that get us to the county sort of funding it by county dollars without the grant sooner? Because of we're using this twenty thousand or if we decide to use it for this project? You know, do we have to get more self-pay, I guess, if you will?
Right. So right now, at the end of twenty twenty-five, I'm projecting that after the, the payments, the opioid settlement payments we've received, which we've already received this year, and we expend the one hundred thousand dollars on the behavioral health, there will be a remaining balance in the account of about eighty-eight thousand dollars. So if you look at next year, that wouldn't be enough to provide for the one hundred thousand plus the twenty that I'm proposing here.
There's no more coming in.
Next year, I'm projecting an under, another ninety thousand dollars coming in. After that, another sixty-seven thousand and it goes on and on. However, yeah, it's, there's a whole schedule.
Decreasing over the years.
It's, it essentially, it will decrease until twenty thirty-eight is the last day or the last year.
Thirty-eight?
Twenty thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Okay.
So, that being said, there is a significant settlement that is still pending. I don't know how much we'll get or when we'll get it. The Purdue Pharma settlement isn't included in this.
And we may.
And that's a major, that's a major award. It's the Sackler family and they're, they're, they're essentially dragging this process out quite a bit. So at some point, that'll affect my projected numbers. I think in the short term, there's enough in there that we can fund the Behavioral Health Liaison through these dollars and not have to raise county tax dollars. Ten, fifteen years from now, I don't know what that looks like. And it'll depend on what that Purdue settlement looks like.
You said that she's closed on the properties and everything. Does she have the permits and everything for her shelter?
Well, some of it is still pending and a lot of that had to do with the federal shutdown. So she's not prepared to open yet, but she's submitted the applications that she needs to. And she's been working, I forget the name of the organization. There's a specific organization that helps with these recovery housing to get that license in place. So it's still in progress.
Because I would think it's a little premature to fund without the permitting stuff. Or if we approve it, we would say issuance upon approval as a female shelter or something.
But.
That would, I, because, you know, all these things to be purchased could be repurposed in another situation. And once the county buys them, the county buys them and the grantee can do whatever. But if the goal is, is to create that shelter, shouldn't we wait till there's a permit issued? So we know it's going to happen or closer to happening?
You, you can make a conditional approval. Yeah, some of that, some of that money would be going towards painting and doing repairs. So that would need to be done before the facility could open. But you could make a conditional on a, an approval process also, yeah.
And do we know it's, it's just federal permits that she's waiting for or is it the local permits? Because I would think she would need both or at least a local.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable answering that. I don't know the answer well enough. I can get that information.
Maybe it's more, asking more questions about that, where she is and that. And when does she anticipate being ready to, you know, really move it forward? Than just outfitting the building, I guess, if you will, without the actual authority to start housing residents. I don't know. It just seems a little early to me and it's not.
In Bill's absence, I think we need definitely more, better timeline on what they need.
Permitting?
What they need locally especially. Or are they in Newcastle?
It's, it's Edgecombe.
Edgecombe.
Dot group, so it's from close to the one.
I don't know that the town has a role in the permitting, but it may be state.
Okay.
Yeah. Do, do you want me to report back with that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, yeah.
Well, the town may have some land use requirements for that. So it may be a local, state, and federal.
Okay. So would you like to table this request?
Yeah, I'll move to table.
And I'll collect some more information for you?
So we get more information?
I second the table for the need for additional information.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of tabling?
Hi.
You know, table and passes.
Okay, I'll report back with some more information.
Yeah, I think it was a feat handy to really get a sense of where she's at when her planning. Well, do you know too, is, is she focusing on females from Lincoln County? Or will be open to any female leaving, transitioning out of jail into the community?
I believe she's going to focus on Lincoln County, but she'll want to fill the beds also. So if we don't have females coming out of Lincoln County, she may reach out to others.
And.
But our, our pod is, our female pod is gonna be open up at Two Bridges soon.
Right. And that will, we, all counties in a regional.
Right.
Situation.
Right. Part of her proposal is to try to encourage the residents at the facility to be employed. And there'll be a, a vehicle there that they can share. So if somebody needs to go to work or to a doctor's appointment, they can all share that shared vehicle. So I think that having folks that are originating from Lincoln County would benefit from that. Because if you've got somebody, let's say, from Oxford County in the facility, they're not gonna have those community connections or want to have an employment arrangement that they would then need to leave going back to another county.
But with a regional jail, if she's focusing on the relationship with the local jail, it makes sense to offer a residency to all participants in that regional jail.
Right, right.
To me, and you mentioned she had a lot of jobs and she really focused on this one in particular though and developing.
She has a lot of businesses and she has people running businesses. So, for example, she has a adult assisted living in another county. She has a manager of that facility. She's the owner of the business, but and.
But she's not necessarily there.
She's not there every day managing it, right?
And she could be at this place to get it up and started.
Right. She'll have a, a house manager that she'll hire as part of the, the business model.
Lots of dogs and cats maybe.
It's a revenue stream.
Yeah.
It helps offset the costs. It provides employment.
It may be a bit of therapy for.
That's an important part of it, yeah.
Well, I look forward to hearing more information about it.
Okay.
It just, it just seems early. So the more that she can let us know about the plan of moving forward and getting up and running, that would be helpful.
Okay, I'll bring that back to, at a future meeting. So the public safety building project is pretty much where it was at the last meeting. We're at the point where our consultants are ready for us to make a decision on where we want to head with this. I don't have the modeling yet. I know that they're kind of waiting on us to say, yes, these are our final parcels.
And it seems like there's just not a lot of good choices available necessarily.
Well, we have some pretty narrow parameters we're looking at.
Okay. So I guess we're on to commission updates, making sure who hosts and what year that thing is.
The Planning Commission's Executive Committee meeting is this Wednesday, the nineteenth at six. That'll be on Zoom and there is Coastal County's Workforce Board, Board of Directors meeting at eight forty-five AM on Friday, the twenty-first. I'll be at both of those.
That if?
That's it for me.
Okay. Uh, let's see, for risk pool, I just want to note some of the things that I highlighted at the last meeting. Hundred and sixty-three open claims, which seems like a lot, but it doesn't seem to be non-manageable by the staff. Seventeen were new claims and they closed eleven since our last meeting, which is monthly. Amazingly is the, the list of claims out of a lot of those are the new ones. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them are deer versus car or car versus deer, which is amazing. Must tell us that something needs to be done about driving skills or animal walking skills, which we have no control over. Except for asking the warden service to do something there. But that's a lot of claims, but we have a lot of drive time. So that makes sense to me. As Carrie mentioned earlier, they're waiting to hear from some counties on, specifically their feedback and surveys for cybersecurity. They can't quote that cybersecurity until all counties have chimed in. There was quite a discussion about responding to his requests and interesting.
I'd be interested to know which counties didn't reply.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't just one. I think there were three or four.
Right. But one county did take a step to, oh, that was the training issue. About sending people to training, which is, I hope that we're, you know, using those opportunities as well and not be on the naughty list, I guess.
No, we, we hosted it at Two Bridges and they usually have a morning and an afternoon so that those who are on shift during the morning can attend in the afternoon, after shift.
Actually happened if we got like a hundred percent.
Yeah, we usually fill that room. I think Todd McPhee attended that training.
Mine, but I heard whether or not, you know, we, we shined or not, if we, if you will.
We had folks from the Sheriff's Office attended as well.
Yeah, that's, you know, that makes sense because they interact with the jail a lot.
Yeah.
It was, and, and I think transport is, I think they have training on that or had training on that at some point, but they were encouraging that. And then for M C C A, a couple of things is that they're planning to meet in December in Lincoln County. Presumably organized by the president of the association. So this will take place on December nine. At two o'clock, they plan on a tour of the jail. So I hope that, I, I anticipate that since a jail is a jail that they probably are there more to hear more about what is happening at the jail for regionalization than anything else. So maybe I pick, you know, Lincoln County and go and do stuff at the jail if that wasn't the, the purpose of it. So to the extent that we can have people there or if the jail authority can speak on that topic, that's gonna be helpful.
Oh, the jail authority hasn't been invited to that.
Really? Well.
I, I don't know that organizer even knows that there is a jail authority.
Okay, yeah, that, well.
I, I think.
If our reps can pass that along, maybe that is better than being blindsided that, you know, that, you know, other than a tour and using the conference room.
I think that's all he's intended, intended to do, yeah.
Okay. So they've scheduled at five o'clock the reception at, is it Rivers Edge? Or the, the place by the bridge on Davis Island?
Mm-hmm.
Water Day?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's had so many names.
Five PM on the ninth or the tenth?
On the ninth. On the ninth. And then at six-thirty, they're accepting, as he says, dinner reservations there. So if the people are coming to travel and staying overnight or just want to have dinner, they can do it there is what I heard. So it's a little ill-defined, but defined.
Okay.
But we should have some type of presence there. I'm gonna at least try to attend the reception. I may hang out for, you know, dinner with some of the folks, but it, it sounds like you just have to make a reservation during the reception or something. They just said that they'll hold some back. So that's on the ninth and then on the tenth will be at the jail. We'll have at nine o'clock the risk pool meeting and then the M C C A. We'll have at nine o'clock, the risk pool meeting and then the MCCA meeting. Uh, email came out, I think this morning or yesterday, um, from the administrator for MCCA. Um, reminding counties that they need to designate the delegate to MCCA. Um, I don't know if they're a term or not, do they?
We vote on it in January.
Okay, so uh, it's just like who's going to be representing the county.
Right.
At this, so I don't know if we have to do anything special.
I'll put it on the, the first January. Well, we can actually do it in December.
Yeah, we can do it that way. And I think that's what Lauren might have asked for. Um, and if, um, yeah, let's just get knock that out, I would say, you know. We can be one of the counties that, um, respond.
Right, we, we had to wait last year because your term didn't start until June.
Uh, just going back to, uh, uh, this is an interesting note to the risk pool is that um, Washington County did raise the question of whether or not there's any coverage for um, their situation out there. And uh, it was looked into, it sounds like rather diligently. But it was determined that there's no coverage under the risk pool because it's for third persons coming after the county, not something done within the county government itself for coverage. And I, I think that's good news that, you know, all the counties are paying for whatever uh, situation was caused, their big deficit.
Yeah.
And the unfortunate no vote on the bond to resolve it.
Would you bring me this past?
So, um, they're gonna have to look elsewhere to uh, deal with that, but not through the risk pool. I think that's all I had for updates. Once there's any questions on those. But uh, well, yeah, I, I would hope it's an opportunity for MCC, MCCA to hear about the regionalization that we're doing, but uh, nobody specifically asked for that. It just me trying to think, okay, why is the association meeting in Lincoln County and why is it helpful to tour the jail?
I, I think he's trying to get around the state.
That, that could be part of it, but I guess if we have to say anything or do anything, that could be a focus of, you know, hey, you know, this is what we're doing here. As opposed to saying, we do planning, we do recycling.
Right, they haven't asked for anything like that.
There's been no request as far as I'm aware.
No, no.
But hopefully, um, Evan and you and Bill can maybe at least appear at the reception so we have a present to say.
I'll plan to.
You just don't say welcome to Fitzburg, you gotta say welcome.
Hey, yeah, that's my district, so.
Okay, perfect. Got to be there.
Uh, I have two additional items if.
Two additional.
To entertain them.
You want to amend the agenda, um, at the bottom of the agenda.
Please.
Okay, what would you like to uh, add to the agenda?
So yesterday afternoon, we received a tax abatement application. And I'd like you to vote to accept it and we'll provide you with copies of it and schedule a hearing at a future date.
Is it timely?
This is for now twenty, the next, this is the tax bills that went out October, November, I would assume.
It's for, it, it says here the taxes were due September thirtieth.
This year.
Of this year. It is the twenty-five tax bill. So it is timely.
And they've already appealed it to the town?
They have, and they've received a, an abatement from the town, but it's not the number they were looking for.
And the name and the town?
The name of the petitioner is Eugene D. McKeever in the town of Nobleboro.
Does it give an address?
It does. And we'll have a copy of this packed for you.
I'll move to accept the abatement appeal application from Eugene D. McKeever versus Town of Nobleboro.
Second that if, any more discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes two zero.
Aye.
And just to bring it to your attention also, I received an email from a different party yesterday asking where to submit an application. So we may be receiving an additional.
Nobleboro just went through their revaluation, I think, so.
And that's sort of, it seems like the trend is, is that, you know, the town's reevaluated and uh, people aren't happy with their valuation. I guess they come here.
And the second item is our old recycling packer truck, the one that we purchased in twenty eleven. It's no longer possesses its engine. It's, the engine is separate. It was removed from um, O'Connor, O'Connor.
GMC.
GMC. Um, several months ago, it was evaluated and that it needed to be replaced. We chose not to replace it. We bought a different truck. So we've got this truck that is full of plastics in the back that we can't get out. And we have a pallet of engine and parts. And it's obviously not drivable. We had to have it towed back so that we weren't paying storage at O'Connor. Um, and I have a, a um, gentleman in town that is interested in purchasing it for scrap. And he's even offered to try to remove the product from the back end so that we can retain the product. He's offered to pay us twenty-five hundred dollars and my recommendation is we accept it.
And he would come and pick it up.
He would come and pick it up.
We do nothing.
He would take it all and bring us the plastics back.
I'll move to approve the sale of the recycling department packer truck.
Second, uh, for discussion is, uh, don't, do we usually um, post stuff on that website and do like an auction type? But we don't always have to do that, is that?
So the truck has exceeded its depreciation and has outlived its lifespan. We can post it. It's not running, so it would likely need to be somebody local that would purchase it. Uh, we did reach out to another entity that thought they might be interested in putting the replacement engine in it and paying for that themselves. And they have since backed up out of that. Um, do we have?
I don't always go through and use the auction website.
Not always.
Find buyers, okay.
Yeah. It's, it's your discretion. We can post it on the website if you'd like.
I think if it had an engine that ran, it would be worth putting it on the website, but now that it's a hunk of waste.
Yeah.
Looking for a whole twenty-five hundred sounds pretty decent.
Yeah, it would try to find another unique person like this one who's already made an offer would be, you know, a long shot.
Right.
Probably, so I like the idea as well.
And we may get the plastic out.
Yeah.
We may get the plastic out.
And you.
And it's.
Get it off of the parking lot.
We could have the parking lot. Well, it's parked on the grass right now.
Oh, or get it off the grass even more. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion, aye. Please do sell it to the gentleman.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just in under the wire, right? It's just in.
Well, we're trying, it just, I just got the, the um, phone call yesterday afternoon, so the agenda was already out.
So next on the agenda is executive session.
For personnel, I do have an item for personnel.
I'll move to executive session pursuant to one MRS A four oh five six A.
I will second that. Any discussion around that? Eric Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are.